I call to order the 28th meeting of the Mayor and City Council, meeting in regular session on Monday, March 25th, 2019. We will have the invocation led by Reverend Warren Litchfield, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Les.
Almighty God, we gather this evening hour to conduct the business of the city. We offer prayer for our mayor, for the president, for the members of the city council, and all in authority, granted to them a sense of justice, strength, and wisdom as they perform their duty in behalf of all thy people. We command this city, this county, this state, this nation, armed forces, our law enforcement, and our fine rescue, and thy people to thy merciful care and understanding. Remember all those who long, lie upon a bed of affliction, comfort of the morn; in the name of the one who is Lord of life we pray. Amen.
Plagued allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Ralph, would you please call the roll?
Mr. DeWalt?
Here.
Mr. Sidnor?
Here.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Lez?
Here.
President Smalls?
Here.
Agenda item two is the approval of the minutes of the 27th meeting of March 11th, 2019. Council, if there are no edits or modifications, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve the minutes for March 11th, 2019.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Agenda item three is a report of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we will begin with Councilman DeWalt.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see a lot of police officers in this room. I feel a lot more safe. I've got a few items to report. We've just initiated the Keep Kids Alive Drive 25 program. This program was started in 2005 by the late Councilwoman Janne Robinson and by our own Council President Fred Smalls. It's kind of drifted away over the years. We're bringing it back. Our main goal is to educate the public, most of the people that, early in the mornings, that drive through our city, which is a lot of them, especially from the 216 area, that come and drive through our city just to get to work. They do speed through our neighborhoods, and we're out there trying to educate them. I've been standing on Route 216 on Montgomery Street in front of Laurel Elementary and on Prince George Street and Main Street, trying to attract their attention. Educating them before they get a speed camera ticket before a police officer pulls them over for speeding is a lot easier, but when it comes to our speed enforcement, it's great to see our officers out there. On 3/13, the Maryland Department of Environment extended a public comment period for the proposed redevelopment of Patuxent Grines Golf Course to Friday, April 26th. If you have any comments, questions, or concerns in relation to the Patuxent Grines Golf Course, you have up until April 26th, and you go on the Maryland Department of Environment website in care of Elisa Rowley, and you can voice those comments, questions, or concerns. Thanks again to the University of Maryland Laurel Medical Center leadership for their transition update at the last council meeting. It was very informative and very educational to have them here. On 3/13/19, I attended a public community forum at Laurel Elementary School sponsored by Prince George's County Councilmember Tom DiNoga. It was very well-attended, and again, we learned about a lot of things that the county does for the city of Laurel residents. On 3/14/19, I attended a CATS fundraiser at Tampico Grill. It's nice to be at an event, having a Laurel community that does so much to keep down the CAT population in our neighborhood, at a great restaurant, who is a great public helper to our citizens at Tampico Grill. On 3/19/19, I attended a swearing-in right in this council chambers of Officer Timothy John Bellic. I hope I pronounced that right. He went through a nine-month Prince George's County Police Academy, and I guess he never had anybody explain about what their retirement was, because I think I probably could have convinced him. Maybe, I know he's coming to Laurel, but boy, that retirement that they have is a great one to look at. On 3/21/19, I attended an organization called Resist at St. Phillips Church. The guest speaker was a lady from Prince George's County Department of Environments. I thanked them for their invitation. It was very educational as far as a lot of the environmental things within the home involving cleaners and plants and different things you can do to improve the air quality in your home. On 3/22, I attended a celebration of life for one of my great friends Kathy Peterson's brother, Tom. My condolences to Kathy and her family and their loss of their brother, Tom. On 3/22, at night, I attended live music, which is fabulous to have on Main Street, Shawn Buckholz, which was a great singer and a great guitar player. And then on 3/23/19, I attended the Laurel Volunteer Rescue Squad banquet at Savage Mill. The only bad thing about that, although Savage Mill is beautiful, we just don't have a facility like the great Ballroom where people could rent it out and have these types of events. And you'd be shocked to see how many calls that these individuals answer per year and how many hires they work per year. And they do it for free. They're all volunteers. And then at that night, I attended Oliver's Old Town Tavern 50th Birthday Party for a good friend of mine, Anthony. Happy birthday, Anthony, on your 50th birthday. That's all I have. Mr. President?
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Councilman Sidnor?
Thank you, Mr. President. On March 15th, I attended an expo at the Laurel Lake Senior Department. It was set up similar to what we have here at the Health Fair. So, there's a lot of health vendors there. I set up a table, giving city council information, also maybe in a veteran, also help a veteran, seeing citizens who are veterans, file a veteran claim for disability benefits. So, that was pretty rewarding as well to help out that. March 16th, I attended the grand opening of Domino's Pizza on Baltimore Avenue. And two upcoming events we have here coming in the city. We have a STEM program on April 27th, open for our Prince George's County residents from grade six to 12. And also, I'm working with Councilman Tom DiNoga in District 21. We're hoping to job fair. That's going to be conducted on May 15th. And more details will be coming forward with the flyers and things like that. So, that concludes my report this time, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. Councilwoman Nicholas?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I, too, on March 13th, attended the town hall meeting for Councilman Tom DiNoga. And on March 16th, I attended the Master Gardeners 101 Tips. I think that was held at 901 Main Street. It was well-attended and a lot of fun and very educational. On March 18th, I attended the clergy breakfast that was here. It was well-attended. There were a lot of pastors here from around the city. And on March 23rd, I, along with my councilmembers, attended the Rescue Squad's awards banquet, and I'd like to congratulate all of the award recipients. And I just wanted to remind everybody that on August 18th, it's going to be the City of Laurel's Annual Arbor Day Celebration. That's going to be at 10 o'clock, and that's going to be at the Christian Academy of Laurel, which is formerly the First Baptist Church of Laurel. So, there'll be more information put out about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nicholas? Councilman Lez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Had a swearing-in of Timothy. Timothy's a Bowie boy, so anytime we can attract police officers from our locale, it's a feather in our cap. He has family here, so hopefully he'll stay here. As you heard from Councilwoman Valerie Nicholas, we'd had the clergy breakfast here at City An awful lot of clergy in that room, so I'm sure they were praying for every councilperson that was there. Breakfast was good, and the mayor will be continuing with that in the coming months. We all attended, several of us, attended the Laurel Volunteer Rescue Squad Awards Banquet at Savage Mill. I'll remind everybody that both the Rescue Squad and the Fire Department are volunteer organizations, so they gladly accept donations. So, if you have the wherewithal, stop by either location and give them a check. They'll appreciate it. April 2nd, we have the Duxnet River Cleanup coming. There's more information on the Laurel website. I also had occasion to speak with Chris again. He's one of the project managers over at the Forbays in Laurel Lakes. The mayor's not here tonight, but I know the mayor is concerned that we have it done by May 1. He's assured me it's going to be done by May 1. We've got some events coming up, and they've got to refill the lake. The only other thing is that some of you have asked me, and then we did some checking, there was a bunch of flags, orange flags, placed on bushes behind the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department down in the depression, where some work was done years ago. We have been unable to find out who's placed those flags, what they're for. Tom DiNoga's office has done some checking for us. Hopefully, they won't be digging it up and stirring up all the sediment back there. That's designed to capture sediment before it goes into the upper bay. And hopefully, it's doing its job. And I know they're doing some work on storm, on stream bank restoration in West Laurel. There's an awful lot of sediment being kicked up, and we don't want it to end up back in Laurel Lakes where they've got to be dredged in a few years. So, that concludes my report. Mr. President?
Thank you, Councilman Lez. I just have a couple of things. I want to extend an invitation to councilmembers to follow up on what Councilman DeWalt mentioned about the Keep Kids Alive Drive 25. On May 1st, at 6:30 p.m., we're invited to come to the PTA meeting at Laurel Elementary School to talk about this program and this drive, so I would certainly invite any council colleagues to join me there at 6:30 on May 1st. I'd be remiss with so many blue uniforms in the room not to thank our Laurel Police Department for the support that they provided to our mosque shortly after the New Zealand massacre that took place. Your presence, I've talked to members of that community since then, and your presence there was, has been, and continues to be greatly appreciated. So, that concludes my report. We'll move into Agenda Item Four, mayoral appointment of Jacqueline Anderson to the Board of Election Supervisors. Councilmembers may remember, I almost said last year. It seems like it was just that recent, prior to our last election. Ms. Anderson was appointed to the Board of Election Supervisors to replace a departing board member. So, she is seeking reappointment, Council, and I would appreciate a motion and second to support that reappointment.
Mr. President, I move for approval.
Thank you, Councilman Lez. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nicholas. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Agenda Item Five is a report of the City Administrator. Goddard?
Thank you, Mr. President. As every month has been, we're all busy in the city, and I certainly want to thank, personally thank, all of our department heads and their staff for all their hard work. The Administrator's Office continues to work with each of the department heads to develop the mayor's succession planning initiative for all cities, all positions within city government. And tonight, you will hear the third video in a series of presentations that will take you behind the scenes this week in the Department of Planning and Economic Development. Our Information Technology Department continues to engineer two additional fiber construction projects in the city, began the process to upgrade the server and software for our police patrol vehicle, camera systems, and completed network upgrades on our public safety radio network. I'm going to leave the briefing of the Police Department out for tonight, because I think there's something even more important than what they've been doing, is who they're going to be recognizing this this evening for their lifesaving efforts. Economic Development Department staff attended a joint work session with the city's historic district commission and Prince George's County Historic Preservation Commission on March 13th. The department will be hosting their second annual Small Business Resource Fair at the Laurel Library on Thursday, April 18th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. Public Works will be meeting this week to discuss the possible expansion of the city's recycling program to include a food scrap composting program to further protect the environment in the city and support our zero-waste goals. I've told you, meeting after meeting, about the trash and the debris that they pick up in the city, and I'll say that in a negative way, but they're busy collecting 437 tons of refuse, just in the last 30 days, and 121 tons of recycling in the city. Just think about the volume of work, and those people that are actually out there lifting that stuff into our refuse vehicles every day. Collected 15 tons of yard debris, 21 tons of residential special collections. As you all know, the Slow Down to Get Around logo that we're putting on all of our new toders is well underway, eight additional bins, 31 residential toders over the last 30 days. Beginning in the spring planting and completed seasonal banner replacement from our winter to spring. Office of Communications, you're going to hear from Audrey, but they've been pretty busy as well. The Department of Communications is pulling out all the stops to promote the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation, and Audrey's going to be talking about that shortly. I'll let you talk about that a little bit, Audrey. Laurel TV produced, and my golly, for the community, if you do not look at anything, please take a look at our Youtubes that are being produced by this communications team. Produced more than a dozen individual stories in the last two weeks alone within the community on everything from Black History Month events at our local schools, profiles on basket treats and eats on Main Street, to a nice profile on the Manor House. I can't begin to tell you how important that is, not only to those of us, part of department heads. We watch those every Tuesday at our staff meetings. They share with us what's going on around the city, and we work here, and we're surprised by the amount of activity. So, I encourage the community, I encourage everybody to please get on our website, please take a look at the fabulous, fabulous work they're doing. Got interns from the University of Maryland that have elected the city of Laurel to come here and to actually work on their craft of being a reporter, being led by a fabulous reporter of our own. They also participated in a career day, the CMIT Academy. Our fire marshal, and I know that this is, if you've been waiting for this, the much-awaited Royal Farms, hopes to open on April 15th. That's their target date. I know the fire marshal's been pushing. You can smell the chicken from here. It's getting ready to open. If you've been by Best Buy, they've got a number of remodeling projects underway. The medical cannabis store is scheduled to open on April 1st, and the fire marshal's working on a new automatic fire extinguisher project called Fire Stop. It's designed to put out fires and residential stove fires, and there's going to be a presentation next month. Yes. So, hopefully, next month, we'll do a presentation to the council. We'll put it up where our community can see some of these great innovations in how you can prevent or extinguish fires, those accidental fires that happen in our stovetop. With that, I will introduce our Deputy Director of Planning and Economic Development, Robert Love, and he will share with you the third series of what our employees are doing. If there's any questions, I'll answer those now. If not, I'll turn it over to Robert. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goddard, Mr. President, board members. The Department of Economic and Community Development really enjoys serving the citizens of Laurel, and this video hopefully shows the dedicated work of our staff, as well as a few of the many tasks that we undertake. And quickly, before we play the video, I just want to thank Audrey Barnes and her communications staff, especially Joyce Jackson and Keston Dakota, for putting together this great video. So, without further ado, please enjoy the video.
Main Street could see some major upgrades coming as part of Main Street, Maryland.
Economic development's important to the city because of job creation. Most importantly, keeps our citizens working.
The Laurel Manor House Bed and Breakfast, the first bed and breakfast in Laurel and Prince George's County.
But what I really hope to see is that the business owners take advantage of the opportunities through the grants to improve their property, to improve their business. Hi, my name is Christian Pulley. I'm the Director of Economic and Community Development. We are a team of six employees. We are responsible for maintaining and building environment for the city, as well as working with city businesses. In my role as Director, I oversee zoning compliance, historic preservation, and economic development efforts.
My name is Leah Steele. I'm the Economic Development Coordinator for the city of Laurel, and my job is to support the business community of Laurel. So, on a daily basis, I work on business retention and attraction for the city. I support the business owners that are navigating through the process of opening a business in the city, as well as site selection for newer, growing businesses.
I'm Robert Love. I'm the Deputy Director for the Department of Economic and Community Development. I'm the main supervisor, actually, for the city planners here within the city of Laurel. Some of the duties that I take care of on a daily basis are, I review various zoning permits that come in within my office. I review and organize all the city construction bonds that come within my office. I organize and write text amendments that are then input into the zoning ordinance. And then I handle complex zoning applications. I have to go to various councils and boards and commissions. For example, the Westside Project, which is a 59-acre mixed-use project with apartments, townhouses, a commercial aspect, and then a padsite for a hotel.
Hey, how are you today?
Very good.
How are you both? Yeah. How can we help you today?
Oh, my name is Monte Bruce. I'm a city planner for the city of Laurel, and my job is to help you and your business be compliant with the city of Laurel zoning ordinance. What I mean by use is, a use is defined, for example, massage parlor. And you ask me what a massage parlor is? I would go in our city land development code and see if that use is allowed and see if that space is allowed in that zone.
My name is Nathan Grace. I'm another planner on staff. In addition to what Monte says, we also review applications to make sure they comply with the land development code. That includes variances, special exceptions, site and landscape plans, among others. We also perform onsite inspections to make sure what they do conforms to our code. And we also write staff reports and present them to the Planning Commission, Board of Appeals, and Historic District Commission.
My name is Brooke Willen. I am the Administrative Assistant to the Economic and Community Development Department. I'm responsible for all of the administrative duties. I make sure everything's organized and the office is running smoothly. I'm also the Secretary to the Planning Commission, Board of Appeals, and the Historic District. I'll set up the meetings, compile the packets, and call the roll and take the minutes.
So, the department's ultimate goal is to continue to improve the quality of life for Laurel citizens and business owners. Laurel is a growing, sustainable city with a small-town feel. We're here to provide excellent customer service in a timely manner. So, if you're out in the community and you want to reach out to the department, feel free to send us an email at ecd@laurel.md.us, or you can follow us on Facebook.
It just keeps getting better and better. Really do. City Administrator?
Set a high bar very first.
Agree. That's your report? Cue. Agenda Item Six is a general public hearing. I will open a general public hearing at 7:26. I don't have a sheet. Is there anyone who's wishing to speak during a general public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the general public hea-- Sarah, save your steps. We'll close the general public hearing at 7:26. Agenda Item Seven is Presentations.
Have a special presentation tonight for Earth Month. As you know, April is Earth Month, and during this April, we're going to do something special as a community. The city of Laurel is participating in the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation, so we can all do something together to help the environment, and it's really easy. Beginning on April 1st, you're going to go to mywaterpledge.com and look for the city of Laurel. There will be a special video message from Mayor Craig Mo, so you'll know you're in the right spot. And then, once you choose the city of Laurel, all you have to do is make a pledge to conserve water by doing things like repairing leaky faucets, pledging to turn the water off while you're brushing your teeth. Even if you do just that one thing, turn off the faucet while you're brushing your teeth, you can save four gallons of water. So, it's a really cool thing. You can also pledge to do full loads of laundry instead of doing a half-load. Same thing with your dishes. All these things will just add up to water saved in the city of Laurel. And while you're on that site, you can also nominate a favorite charity, and one of our charities in Laurel could win a Toyota Highlander Hybrid. So, this is a really, really exciting contest, and we're going to do it all together in the city. Now, here's another really important thing that I want the community to know, and also people who live and work here. If the city of Laurel can get more people to sign up and make a pledge than any other city our size, someone in Laurel will win $3,000 towards their utility bill. So, we want to make Laurel be number one on that list of people who are pledging to save water. Also, another important thing to note is that all city of Laurel employees, people who live here, who work here, you are eligible to participate in the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. So, let's all get in there together. Encourage the kids at school to talk to their teachers about conserving water, but go online and make that pledge. And also, while you're there, don't forget to select a charity. So, it's all happening beginning April 1st, and it goes all the way through the entire Earth Month, which is the month of April. So, I'm really excited. I know we can do it. I think a city in New Mexico, one, a very small city in New Mexico won last year. Come on, Laurel. We can do it. Get on there and make that pledge.
I agree with you. We can do it. Before you go off, I have a proclamation that I would like to read, and I'd like Woman Nicholas to join me down here. Thank you. This is large enough tech that I don't have to put glasses on. I wonder who this was made for. Whereas the city of Laurel continues to encourage our citizens and businesses to conserve water and power daily, and to inspire our citizens to care for our natural resources. And whereas the city of Laurel encourages our citizens to become better environment stewards, and whereas, from April 1st through 30th, 2019, the city of Laurel is participating in the Wayland Challenge for Water Conservation, and encourages all citizens to participate by making a series of online pledges at mywaterpledge.com. by making a series of online pledges at mywaterpledge.com, mywaterpledge.com, to reduce their impact on the environment and possibly see savings in their water and electric or electricity bills. Now, therefore, P., Craig A. Mo, Mayor of the City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Water Conservation Month in the City of Laurel, and urge all citizens to observe this day and encourage citizens to take the conservation challenge. Also, under Agenda Item Seven, Lieutenant Bradley DePietro from the Laurel Police Department will make presentations on the Life Savings Award.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Lieutenant?
Do you like me facing you or proud? Matter?
Yeah. Thanks. For now.
Thank you, Mr. President, City Council. I'm here tonight as a manor and very proud of the men and women of the Laurel Police Department to present several lifesaving awards over recent events that I've had recently. I'd be remiss if I didn't say tonight that as a commander and I speak for the Deputy Chief and the other commanders, that our greatest asset to this police department is our people. I probably can speak for some of the union guys that would happily see, talk about any raising of benefit, that people come here, it's about what's behind me and how outstanding these men and women. So, going on. First, I'd like to describe to you what we are doing tonight. It is the lifesaving award is given to an employee that renders aid to a seriously injured or sick person. The employee goes beyond the expectation of a first responder and renders life support to a person that could possibly die from their injuries or illness. An example of this would be the application of CPR to a heart attack victim or the rescuing of a drowning person. To be eligible for this award, the victim would have to still have been alive at the time the officers were finished rendering aid. Tonight's first lifesaving award goes to PFC Matthew Jordan. Also being recognized with a unit citation for the same incident is PFC Karina Jackson On May 5th, 2018, Laurel PD officers responded to the 500 block of Montgomery Street for an unresponsive 29-year-old male. Sergeant Rexine and PFC Jordan immediately recognized the signs of an opioid overdose and moved the subject to the floor to prepare for the lifesaving measures while calling for the next incoming officer to bring Narcan to the scene. PFC Jackson responded to the scene and gave PFC Jordan the Narcan. PFC Jordan immediately administered one dosage nasally to the subject. Prior to the fire department arriving on scene, the subject began to regain consciousness. Due to their quick thinking and response to this call, all three officers are receiving the Laurel Police Department's unit citation. In addition, PFC Jordan is receiving a lifesaving award. Tonight's second lifesaving award goes to PFC Bennett John. On June 25th, 2018, PFC Johns was traveling off-duty on Route 100 in Howard County when he observed an overturned vehicle just off the roadway. PFC Johns pulled over to assist and was informed by another citizen that the driver was trapped inside of the vehicle. PFC Johns observed smoke coming from the vehicle and an adult female banging on the glass from inside of the vehicle in a great deal of distress. PFC Johns climbed on top of the vehicle in order to gain access to one of the passenger doors. He then pulled the female from the wreckage and away from the smoking vehicle. The female was taken by the fire department personnel to the hospital with several serious injuries. For his decisive actions and willingness to risk his own safety in order to climb on top of an overturned vehicle so that he could pull the driver from the car to safety, PFC Bennett Johns is receiving the Laurel Police Department's lifesaving. The final lifesaving award tonight goes to Sergeant Randy Snarely, Sergeant Jesse Cunningham, On November 28th, 2018, at approximately 19:03 hours, a woman came into the LPD lobby advising that her daughter had stopped breathing. Officers located the daughter in the woman's vehicle and found her unresponsive with no pulse. Officers carried the young woman into the station lobby and started performing lifesaving measures. Officers continued performing CPR until rescue personnel arrived and took over. Thanks to the quick action of these officers and that of the EMS personnel, the young woman regained a pulse en route to Howard County Hospital and was admitted to ICU. Unfortunately, on November 29th, 2018, the young woman passed away from her injuries. Thanks to the efforts of the four officers, the family had an opportunity to gather and say goodbye to their loved one before she passed away. The four officers were receiving the Laurel Police Department's lifesaving. As all the presentations begin.
Lieutenant DePietro, I'd like for us all, along with our chief and the council, to do a photo op with the recipients, and you.
Excuse me. I'd like to make a comment.
Please.
You know, as I sit here and look at you all, I'm not surprised by any of this. We have great officers here in the City of Laurel, and I'm a Facebook queen, as most of you all know. And there's a lot of people in the city that make great comments about our officers, how you stop and you help people along. And I've witnessed you, and I said to one of the officers this afternoon that when I see you all talking to people, I don't stop to interrupt. But I just want to thank you because you all are really a great set of officers. The community policing in this city is the best that I've seen, and I've lived a lot of different places, but you all are great, and I just want to verbally tell you that. Thank you.
Chief Gray, Lieutenant DePietro, and officers, to echo Councilwoman Nicholas's words, we positively appreciate, on behalf of the citizens of our great city, all that you do and the sacrifices that you and your families make on a daily basis. We will move on to Agenda Eight. Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 1938. An ordinance to amend the Laurel City Code, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Four, Public Ethics, Section 2-56, to allow for certain technical changes to specify and clarify requirements for filing a financial disclosure statement in connection with a candidacy for elective office by the City Ethics Commission and the Board of Election Supervisors, and providing an effective date. I read the title into the record for the second reading. I will open the public hearing at 7:43. Have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:43. Council? Actually, I think before we take a vote, we'll wait for Councilman Les. Yeah. He has to step up for a sec. Here it comes. Councilman, we're holding to vote for you. I just read the title for 8A into the record, and Ms. Rau-- oh, rather, I'm sorry, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve ordinance 1938.
We have a motion. There, a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Rau, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Agenda Item 8B, Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 1939. An ordinance to amend the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for fiscal year July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. I will open the public hearing at 7:45. Ms. Saylor, I presume everything remains unchanged? Okay, thank you. I will open a public hearing at, I say at 7:45. Have no one signed up to speak? Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:45. Council, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move for approval.
Thank you, Councilman Les. There, a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nicholas. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Rau, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
President Les? I'm sorry, President Smalls.
I vote yes. Agenda Item 8C, Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Resolution Number 3-19. A resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel for the purpose of providing healthy food options at city facilities and vending machines. I read the title into the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:46. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:46. And once again, council, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 3-19.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nicholas. There, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Les. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Rau, call for the vote, please.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Agenda Item 8D, Introduction, the First Public Hearing on Resolution Number 4-19. A resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel to adopt wireless facility design guidelines consistent with all applicable federal and state laws for the citing, construction, installation, co-location, modification, relocation, operation, and removal of wireless technology and associated equipment within the city's public right-of-way. I read the title into the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:47. Frost?
Good evening again, Mr. President, council members. This evening, I'm here to introduce Resolution 419, which is our Wireless Facility Design Guidelines. And in coordination with Ordinance 1933, these two documents will regulate the installation, operation, and maintenance of wireless facilities located in our rights-of-way. The document itself is around 15 pages. It talks about citing and placement, operations, types of installations, colors, boxes located on the poles, attachment to the poles at the ground level, and several safety-type issues. It also talks about the antennas themselves, the height of the antennas, the height of the poles. And this document will be used to establish, as part of the permitting process, whether we will approve the installation of a small cell facility or a wireless facility.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:49. A second public hearing with possible action will be held at the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, April 8th, 2019, at 7 o'clock PM. Agenda Item Nine is Bid Recommendation. Consideration of a bid recommendation to purchase Panasonic mobile data terminal. Mr. Frost?
Mr. President, this item was discussed at our work session at the beginning of the month and is a technology purchase related to our integration of the Prince George's County CAD and Records Management System, which is underway. For numerous technical reasons, both being driven by the software itself and the current age of our mobile data terminals, the administrators made the decision that it was in the best interest of the project to replace our current mobile data terminals with brand-new, next-generation mobile data terminals. This is state contract. The vendor is USC Canterbury. They're out of Lanham, Maryland. This will be off the State of Maryland hardware--
This will be off the State of Maryland Hardware Master Contract 060B2490022. We're purchasing approximately 60 mobile data terminals. The cost will be $363,420, and staff recommends the council approve the purchase of 60 CF33 rugged laptop mobile data terminals, the State of Maryland contract price.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. Counsel, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the acquisition of the terminals.
Thank you, Councilman Les. Councilman Sidnor, you care a second?
I second, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ralph, please call the roll.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. Is there any other business? Come before the Mayor and City Council. Seeing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.